...call vote without separate discussion unless pursuant to council rules, council requests an item to be removed to be considered separately. And tonight, number five, Voss and Coleman vote no. Number six, Coleman wishes to speak. With that.
Move approval, Your Honor.
I think I pulled item forty-six. Please.
Do you like to speak on that? Okay.
Move approval, Your Honor.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
Seven yes.
Next, they'll go to our hearings. The first one, number fifty-one, on vacation of air rights within a portion of East Sixth Street right-of-way adjoining six oh three East Sixth Street and to correct the vacation of air subsurface and surface rights within portions of Des Moines Street and East Sixth Street right-of-way adjoining six oh three East Sixth Street and conveyance of a corrected permanent easement for airspace above city-owned property to HOA Aston LLC. A is first consideration of the ordinance above. B is final consideration of the ordinance above. Waiver requested by Mike Whelan manager requires six votes. Jermaine comments from the general public, two minutes per person to speak, ten minutes maximum. Anyone wishing to speak?
Seeing none, I'll move item fifty-one, fifty-one A and fifty-one B.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Next item is fifty-two, on request from Iowa Pacific Processors, Inc., Mike Evert, Officer, and City of Des Moines to amend Plan DSM, creating our tomorrow comprehensive plan to revise the future land use classification from business park to industrial and to rezone parcels located in the vicinity of twenty-six oh six Sunset Road from EX mixed-use district to limited I-1 industrial district to allow expansion of an existing industrial use continued from June ninth, 2025. Choose one alternative below. A, deny or B, continue the hearing until July fourteenth, 2025, and direct the city manager and legal department to prepare the necessary legislation to approve with conditions. First would be the parties of interest to speak. That's within two hundred and fifty feet of the property to be rezoned, and they will be given five minutes. Second would be germane comments from the general public for two minutes per person. Is anyone here wishing to speak to this item?
Seeing none, I would like to move item fifty-two B.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Coleman.
I'm just making sure I know what we're doing.
Okay.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Next item is item fifty-three, on request from Scottish Rite Park, Inc., Daniel J. Boer, Officer for property located at twenty-nine oh nine Woodland Avenue, for an appeal of a conditionally approved type-two design alternative to wave public sidewalk along Woodland Avenue and Twenty-Eighth Street, continued from June ninth, 2025 meeting. Choose one alternative below. A, deny and approve the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission, or B, deny and approve the recommendation allowing pedestrian crossing on the western edge of the current drive, or C, grant appeal. First is the parties and interests applicant and those within two hundred and fifty feet of the property. Be given up to five minutes to speak. And second would be comments from the general public for two minutes each. Anyone wishing to speak? Please state your name, address, or ward where you're from.
I'm Elizabeth Dolly for the scribing, D-A-W-L-E-Y. This is our architect.
I'm Asa Westphal. I guess my address, thirty-nine thirty-nine Grand Avenue.
Okay.
So.
You can, if you want to, you have pictures, you can put below.
Yeah. So we had a chance to, since the last meeting, meet out there with the city engineer and kind of come up with two different concepts that they felt would reduce the cost. And we did have some discussion about just feasibility and just the likelihood of how people cross here. This first was sort of a dumbed-down version of what they had originally proposed. Our concerns were getting into these utility boxes using the full SUDAS requirements. We would have been building a large retaining wall, and it would have been, I forget what at the time it was, it was upwards of fifty thousand dollars, I think, is what we were looking at at the time to do that work. What this has changed to is a cut curb on this side has remained, but the city said they would allow us to bring in the sidewalk tight against the street because there's literally a zero rise there. There is no curb. And what their thought was is if we actually enter into the sidewalk at zero and then bring it up along this stretch, we would have, we'd be replacing the curb here, potentially some curb on this side. We'd have a six-inch curb along these two sides as needed to hold back the soil, and they would just have to do minor rework of this here. The one thing that that did change is the sidewalk would be running this full extent, which is about eighty-five feet. And there's, and there's other purposes for that. Not only is it something that would have been originally included in SUDAS that we didn't have before, but it also creates sort of a control joint between the owner's driveway and the city street. And there was some discussion, the city, I think more as an incentive than anything, was talking about coming in and repaving along here once that's done because it's in pretty bad shape. That was sort of the first thing that was discussed. The second was, I think, in part based on some of the discussion that was mentioned here last time, since the owner's sidewalk actually comes down along this side of the driveway and the west side, it was felt that if they could flare this out, what we could do is we could get something across the street outside of the root system of this tree. This would again require coming in at a zero elevation, and there would be a depression along this stretch of the sidewalk. I couldn't tell you exactly how much, but they would come in really low, and then they would actually, their rises would go either direction here. And we did have our contractor throw together some kind of quick numbers on these. The first one still comes in around twenty-eight thousand five hundred dollars, if that were something that was going to happen. The second one, this one, actually comes in at about eighteen-three. The biggest concern the owner has about this one is coming down this driveway, a lot of the cars do opt to head west here, and the fear is that if cars are forced to kind of straight out here and then head west, they're going to actually have to go over into this eastbound lane of traffic to make that corner. Just it's going to happen, and that's also, this side of the street is where the parking happens, so.
It's a very narrow street, as it is, and I just don't want to see our residents strain into that eastbound lane to get into traffic.
Ultimately, the, they have been sort of monitoring the foot traffic down that hill, and it just really isn't, it doesn't really exist.
The only foot traffic down that hill is to the dart stops, which are not on our property.
Yes, that was completely ruled out by the city engineer as just not being feasible.
Yeah. Okay.
So.
So, hey, the city engineers told us that the preferred option is.
First.
Right, it's option A, the one that you showed with the sidewalk across the twenty-ninth and across the streets.
Of the two options, Scottish Rite Park's preference is also the preferred option, but we don't, we don't see the benefit.
I guess, I wonder why you're.
We're not seeing the benefit because nobody's going down that sidewalk and crossing to that sidewalk on Twenty-Ninth Street. So I would have to say of the preferred, of the two options, I also think that the planning and zoning option is the preferred option if we're required to accept one of the two options, but I don't see.
Why are you pouring concrete on top of concrete? I guess, I don't understand why.
Across that driveway?
Yeah.
So that is actually something that SUDAS requires. They, for whatever reason, they don't feel that, like, they want to maintain.
Can't paint, you can't paint? Paint something?
No, I think it has more to do with just heaving and things like that.
Real chair.
It's, yeah, I believe it's an ADA thing that they, when you ever cross a driveway, they want to continue that concrete through.
Interesting, okay.
And, you know, we hadn't included that before when we talked about it, but when we got out on site and began talking about it, they said they would require it now. This is the current condition out there, so.
Needs to be fixed anyway.
This is, so, and full disclosure, Scottish Rite does have future plans to redo their driveway up here. So when that, the discussion that was had with the city engineer was, if they're redoing that, and the sidewalk project becomes part of that at a later date, then they would find funds to come in and redo this portion here.
Because currently, we just do asphalt on our parking lot, but if we.
So, I mean, they were trying to help out and trying to make this make sense for everybody, and we appreciate that.
So the city, the city would come in and do that yellow square, not Scottish Rite?
Yes.
Well, Scottish Rite would do the red square and concrete, correct, Asa?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I was confused there.
Do you need more time on that piece?
That's fall. That's scheduled for fall.
Of next year.
Either fall, or if we get an early winter or something like that, it'd be spring. And again, the city said they were completely open to when it happens. Like I said, they were, because they want it, they were, they were being very accommodating, so.
So we were scheduled for a new asphalt overlay for fall, twenty-twenty-five, but if, you know, if, if we're required to do this, then we have to sort of rethink the whole concrete overlay.
Yeah.
So. So the plan is to, for Scottish Rite to do, redo the driveway, and this could be part of the driveway and that done, done earlier?
Yes.
Is that what happened?
That is, that is the plan. The only real objection being, again, the usefulness of it.
Right.
And whatnot, and the cost versus the usefulness.
Doesn't make, doesn't make sense to put a sidewalk down that road.
I'd just like to speak a little bit to that. We've never had a sidewalk on South Union, either side of the street.
Yeah.
In front of my restaurant, there used to be one, but not on the other side of the street. Now that we put a sidewalk on there, people use it. They use it all the time. And so it does make an incredible difference.
This is.
When people do have a place to walk, and they know they can use a sidewalk, it will make an incredible difference. I know right now, because it's not real user-friendly, probably that's why there's not a lot of people walking.
I mean, how many feet of sidewalk are we talking about?
It's not that.
Well, it's a win-win because if you, if we wait and you pave the driveway, maybe you're adding another ten or fifteen feet of sidewalk with a raised curb on it, and we're done.
Yep.
So the thing would be the timing, which I think we've mentioned anyway, nothing's going to happen this summer anyway, so if you're going to wait till, so if you want to do something.
So my inclination would be to move option A with the, I think it's A, that covers the recommendation that we're talking about. But we have to direct staff to make sure.
Coordinate.
Coordinate and to allow time, so if you're not doing it this year, that's okay, to allow the time to get it done, but to, and to move it as your design showed up to the front, so we avoid the utility box and avoid the need for, for the retaining wall. So that's what I would move is option A.
With a time parameter.
Correct.
To allow.
To direct staff to allow the time parameter to fit with.
What's B then? What's B? Is that the second one they showed us?
That was the second one.
Oh, okay.
Any others?
Yeah, B, B doesn't really make any sense.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Because you cross the street, and now all of a sudden, that person across the street is responsible for clearing the sidewalk, and it's just messy.
No, I.
Mayor, do we need a B, or do we need to allow other people to speak on?
I was going to see if anyone else wanted to speak to it. I guess if you are finished, we will have, you'll have up to two minutes to speak to
Hi, Garland Armstrong, representing Ward Two, and I'm also a Dart bus rider. I sometimes take Route Five bus going through that area on my way, and then when bypassing it, I've seen what the problem is, not, not the sidewalk, as they were saying, but what about those with mobility, especially those in wheelchairs who have to come down and wants to go to the bus stop area? There's a problem there, and some of them have to be in grass waiting at the bus stop. How can you work that out and then find out to make sure where the bus will get them right there to the, to it? So if they're going from Scottish Park on Route Five, going northbound, and then coming back, what's the closest stop when they're going right back home to Scottish Park? How they can work that out on that one? Because like they were saying, the sidewalks, especially going at the bus stop for those with mobility, so I think you also need to check into that also too, especially those in wheelchairs or walkers or power wheelchairs for those residents who live there.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Can I respond to that? To respond to that, we have polled our residents, and nobody is using the dart stop.
Okay.
So I.
For somebody in the neighborhood, then.
Yeah, it's a neighborhood thing, and I think most of the dart stop activity is coming from the apartment complex next door.
Okay.
And we are.
Okay, so I think there's a motion on the table.
Exactly. I was actually going to show something quick, just to ease anybody's mind, if you can get this up here. And of course, this is the hardest one to read. So this apartment down here, the apartment complex driveway, you can't see it, but there's a dart stop there, and there's a dart stop there.
Okay, so it's further down.
So, but.
So having that sidewalk.
We would now have access to that side of the street. It's just that you'd have to kind of.
Neither, neither of the dart stops are.
And the city also looked at that condition and said, on the north side of the street, there's no way you're going to, a path to the dart stop without extensive, yeah, I mean, you'd be taking a lot of soil out and putting in a large retaining wall. They don't want the retaining wall because they'll have to absorb it, and they'll have to maintain it. And we know that the apartment is probably going to see more use by the bus just in general.
Okay, okay, thank you. So it's been moved and seconded. I would just say please vote.
Six yes, one abstain.
Motion carries. Item fifty-four, on assessment of five hundred dollar penalty to alcoholic beverage license permit holders for violation of Iowa alcoholic beverage laws. Five minutes for parties and interests. Jermaine comments for the general public, two minutes per person to speak. Anyone wishing to speak?
I'll move this if there's no one to speak.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Please vote.
I pulled item six off, and I'm going to speak to this in a little bit.
Okay.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Item fifty-five, on assessment of a fifteen hundred dollar penalty and thirty-day suspension to alcoholic beverage license permit holder for violation of Iowa alcoholic beverage laws.
Move approval.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Item fifty-six, on assessment of fifteen hundred dollar penalty and sixty-day suspension to alcoholic beverage license permit holder for violation of Iowa alcoholic beverage laws. Anyone wishing to speak to this? If not.
Seeing none, I'll move item fifty-six, Your Honor.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Fifty-seven, on Principal Park bullpen relocation. Resolution approving plans, specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, receive and file bids, and designating the lowest responsive, responsible bidder as Ball Team LLC, Richard Ball, managing member, seven hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Council communication number twenty-five dash two four nine. A is the approval of contract and bond. General public may only comment to the plan, specifications, or form of documents, engineer's estimate, or low bidder designation. Those will be the only comments to be considered germane. Two minutes per person to speak. Anyone wishing to speak?
Sorry. I always get the same look when I come up here. You again. My name is Carol Maher. I live in Ward Three in downtown Des Moines. I believe we're rounding third base on this project with this three-quarters of a million dollars being spent, and I'm hoping that the I Cubs, who have been the recipient of the largesse of Des Moines taxpayers, appreciate the amount of money that we're spending here, in this case, seven hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, and would consider allowing City of Des Moines residents to come to their park free to see all the improvements that we've paid for. I think that would be really cool, especially this stuff that's not typically visible to people that pay to go to baseball games. So I think it would be great for them annually, maybe, to offer inside, inside baseball view of what we spend our money on. Thank you.
I believe they did do that with the last improvements for the, the dressing rooms and such, so.
They did.
Yeah.
With that.
Oh, well, go ahead. I, I mean, I'm going to, I guess, move it, but I have some questions for, for staff, and I asked a piece of this because this is an additional phase. And this is significantly under what, what the engineer's estimate was, which I think the staff explanation and to some questions was, well, these are the same folks who are familiar with the, the previous contract. I just want to make sure that there is some accountability and that we don't see a lot of change orders that end up making up the difference between this and other bids. I think this was bid aggressively, and if they had familiarity with the project, and that is the explanation, but I don't know what we, if there's anything we can do in terms of some accountability on the change orders, so we don't see thirteen change orders that ends up with this project being, being at cost of what other bidders would have been because we see change order after change order on this. And so I, I appreciate the explanation that staff gave, but, and maybe I'm looking to legal on this, if there's any direction we can provide on the, the change order piece.
Somebody that might be able to answer.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, and members of the council. Tom Block, Deputy City Engineer. And we appreciate your, your questioning of this, because when we see bids come in like this too, we, our first question is, why is there such a difference? And typically, what, what results in, in major changes, or maybe significant changes in, in bids is exactly what you said, is familiarity with the project, which this contractor, Ball Team, has by doing the first phases of the, of the work. Two, we don't know what their workload is, so they may be short on workload, so they may be aggressive in bidding that. Sometimes contractors, just when they do a project, they want to finish the project, and so they may bid more aggressively because they want to do the whole thing as opposed to letting a second contractor or a third contractor come in and do the work. And fourthly, or thirdly, fourthly, I'm sorry, I lost my thought here, but those would be the main reasons is, oh, and then the amount of risk, but their experience with doing the first phases, we believe that they understand what the risk is going into this project, whereas if they were not familiar with the work, not familiar with the facility, not familiar with the requirements of the MILB standards and the timeframes, that would make them a little more leery as far as putting in, you know, a really competitive bid. So with that, we feel that's put them in a position to be able to bid aggressively, whereas the other contractors who aren't familiar with those timing standards that were required, that probably made them a little more leery and increased their bids. So that's why we believe that they had such a competitive bid. We are confident in, in that they will be able to perform this, because we did reach out to them and say, are you sure you didn't miss anything in their bid? And they said, no, they bid the full package of, of the plans and specifications, and, and so they are not, they're not going to come back and say, oh, we didn't realize that was in there. So we're confident of that. And then also regarding the change orders, the, the change orders primarily, there was one major change order that we put back into the project in the first phase, which was the out, the outfield fence. We had originally had bid that as an alternate bid item. After the bids came in, we removed that. We didn't accept that part of the project. The I Cubs came back and said, we really want to get this into the project. They, they provided some additional funds, and we were able to find funding to then add that back in after the bids were taken. So that was essentially half the cost of all the total, all the total change orders. Then in addition, as far as the other change orders, those were primarily just added scope items. When you do a, when you do a rehab of a facility of this age, and you have walls that you've got to take down and replace, that's where there's a lot of unknowns when you're doing design. So that was a result of a lot of the change orders. This particular project with the, with the bullpens, we're not expecting the uncertainty at all as we, as we did in the first phase. So hopefully that answers your question.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anything that, from an accountability perspective on the change order? I mean, we're not expecting, we're not expecting things, so.
Yeah, after, I mean, when we look at the, the first phase of the project, when we, when we added, after we added in back in the outfield fence, the remaining change orders ended up being, I think, six point six percent of the total bid. And that actually is not very bad at all for a rehab project like this. So as far as can we guarantee, can we guarantee no change orders? No, we actually cannot guarantee. That means we'd have to have an absolutely perfect set of plans, which, to my knowledge and my career, I've never known of a perfect set of plans. And if we, if we don't add, if we don't add scope and the plans are exact, and they build exactly what they bid, then we would expect no change orders. But if we say, hey, we want to do this differently, or if we want to change something out, that would be a change of scope, and it could be, it could be a deduct too. But, but to guarantee no change orders? No, I absolutely cannot do that.
I'm not asking guaranteed, but, but, and maybe just the fact that we've pressed this a little, I mean, we just want scrutiny on, particularly, if it's initiated by engineering because we're changing the scope of work, that, that's appropriate, but I hope that there's not stuff coming back.
No, and, and just, just, just so you know, we scrutinize every change order that comes through, no matter which contractor it comes from, because, because we get contractors. They're trying to make as much as they can, but we realize, you know, we're working for the, the residents of, of the city as if it's our personal money, so we scrutinize every change order that comes in. If we don't agree with it, we are going to, we're going to question them, and they're going to have to come back and explain to us why they think they're justified for something. And, and if we agree, then we agree. If we don't, we don't, and then nothing, move forward.
All right. With that, unless others have questions, I'm happy to move.
I don't have questions. I, I do know them, and I've seen their work, and I, I think they've delivered for the city on lots of projects, you know. And speaking, speaking of that, I think one of there was another question that had come up regarding the schedule, were they able to meet the schedule? Yes, they were able to meet the schedule, the tight timeframes they had, even with the added scope that we, we put onto the project, so, so they were able to do that too, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Next item is fifty-eight, approving plans, specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, and receive and file bids on the twenty-twenty-five parking garage repair program. Council communication number twenty-five dash two forty-seven. General public may comment only on the plans, specifications, form of documents, and engineer's estimate, and those will be the only comments considered germane. Anyone wishing to speak to this? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Seeing none, I'll move item fifty-eight. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Motion carries. Next item, 59?
Six.
It's back to six.
Oh, sorry. Back to six, sorry. We're end of hearings, and the time is 5:31. Okay, I think Councilman Coleman would like to speak on this item.
Yeah, and I, I appreciate the council giving me a minute on several of these agendas, but I'd, I'd like to underscore two points. One, like I realize, if everybody joined Carl and I in voting, no, we'd, um, we'd worry our lawyer without a, and I don't wanna keep, I don't really wanna keep doing this, but Matt, I would just share with you in the manager's office that we've talked about returning with some, uh, common sense, uh, uh, requirements, regulations, and I would like, I would like to see that happen at the soonest possible time. I hoped that we would have it done by June 30th, because each of these companies have to come back for a renewal by June 30th, so now we're renewing them. That's point number one. I'd, I'd appreciate speed, because I feel bad, you know, forcing everybody to vote yes when I'm voting no, and I don't want you to think I'm grandstanding, I just really wanna force some changes on this. Number two, on the agenda, we find, uh, a group of companies on three different actions, 54, 55, and 56. Now on this action, we're granting 22 license for vape shops to people on the same agenda that we just fined for violating our, our rules. One's a liquor license, one's vape rules. It seems to me that long-term, this could be one of the kinds of regulations that we consider when we go to renew organizations that want one of these licenses. The, like, what, now, I said 22, one of them's applying for 20 license, uh, liquor license renewals, but there are 22 different license we're granting to people on the same agenda we're fining them for, for violating it. And I'd like to, to have staff look at what options we might have there, as that being another trigger for, uh, a delay in renewing their license, additional requirements they might have to meet, but I, I just feel like we're, um, I feel like we're being a little hypocritical on behalf of the citizens when we approve an extension of license on one hand and fine them for their behavior and activities on, on another agenda item. So, I'm not gonna vote for it, so I'd appreciate somebody else moving it, and I do thank the council members that, um, that are, are allowing me to speak to this and vote against them.
Councilman, have, have you or, or could you or any of your colleagues send the manager's office some of those requirements that you have in mind, or do you have, do you have...
I think he already gave them.
We have it all, okay.
I think there's people working on it.
Yeah, it's already being worked on.
Okay.
I've got a number of people from my office working with the manager's office.
I'll move six, A through K.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, please vote.
And I'll just thank Councilmember Coleman for continuing to beat the drum on this. I think that's helpful, and I agree these changes would be welcome sooner rather than later.
Okay, got it.
Five yes, two no.
Motion carries. Next item, I think Councilman Mandelbaum wanted to speak to this one?
Yeah.
You pulled it off?
I, I pulled it off. I, and part of this, um, you know, one of the things, I, I know we were giving our new fleet manager some time, but I would appreciate getting a, a broader update on our vehicle transition plan, and I know, I think there's some good work that, that was done in this process. There are a number of hybrid vehicles being added to the police department, and I think that's a healthy compromise as we look for all-electric pursuit vehicles. I think there's comfort with the hybrid, and, uh, it appears that there is good receptivity from, from officers with those vehicles, so I'm glad to, to see the hybrid vehicles being added to the department. There is also some evaluation of size of vehicle, and so I think 13 of these vehicles, we're actually getting a slightly smaller sized vehicle, and I'm appreciative of, of that work. There are unfortunately no electric vehicles in, in this mix, is what I, what I've been told, and particularly for a couple of the, i-if there are just passenger vehicles outside of the, the trucks and SUVs, I would be more comfortable even if there is a little more upfront cost in making that transition. I think we're gonna find over time that the electric vehicles we can own longer, and the total cost, even if estimates today are not, are not there, I think the total cost of ownership would be of value to our, our residents, and I'd like to understand the, just the analysis and evaluation a little bit better there. So, that's my request to staff, and hopefully we can have that conversation sooner rather than later. If no one else is interested, I, I'd be happy to just spend a little time with the, the fleet team just to try and understand this stuff.
If they put together a report or whatever, they can share with all of us, and I need to read this number because we pulled it off.
Oh, sorry.
I, that's okay.
One other thing before you read, I would like to know, and I've asked Scott for this, when it's extremely cold, what's the use of the electric cars? Because I, I believe they have issues when it's extremely cold, and they weren't able to use a lot of them, and they didn't go as far as they do obviously when the weather's different, so that needs to be included.
Okay, so, the item we're talking about is number 46, it's authorizing the city manager to approve the purchase of up to 46 vehicles for use in various city departments for fiscal year FY 2025 to 2026 to replace older and less reliable equipment as part of a deliberate and ongoing lifecycle management process. Council Communication Number 25-259. We will be getting more information and updates on how the vehicles were determined, on what they are going to do, and how we plan to keep going forward. So with that...
I'll move item 46.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion is carried, item carried. Number 59, regarding the redevelopment of 602 Robert D. Ray Drive, the Argon Armory, Council Communication Number 25-264. Any discussion on this?
I, I'd just make a, a quick comment, and I, I'm happy to move item 59, but, um, as this comes back, one of the things that, that I, I think would be beneficial, we've got a number of riverfront or near riverfront adjacent properties, and maybe thinking of a broader sort of master planning or visioning and thinking about how all of these properties could be redeveloped, maybe together as a package, or thinking about how they complement each other, um, or complement some of the other efforts that we have ongoing near the riverfront, and help contextualize that piece. But with that, that said, I'm happy to move item, uh, item 59.
I think this gives us the opportunity to do more conceptual now that it's opened up the whole front, and also I think we need more discussion on property from the state that they might not need to, which would help the Armory, so...
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any other discussion? If not, please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carried. Number 60 is amending Chapter 114 of the municipal code regarding traffic regulation changes as follows. Council Communication Number 25-244. A modification, parking modification, Woodland Avenue between 16th Street and 17th Street. B, parking modification for Southwest First Street between Clay Avenue and Fulton Drive. C is parking modification of 38th Street and Valdez Drive intersection. D is corner clearance parking restrictions, one, Southeast 26th Street and Garfield Avenue. Two is 41st Street and Forest Avenue.
I'm happy to move item 60, A, B, C, D, 1, and D 2, and if there's no discussion, pursuant to Rule 42A, I would waive the second and third reading.
Been moved and seconded, please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Item 61, items regarding the border area, Council Communication Number 25-242. A, amending Chapter 102 of the municipal code relating to border area maintenance. B is amending Chapter 42 of the municipal code relating to nuisance in border areas. Anyone wish, any comments?
I'll, I'll, I'll move it. I appreciate all the time that staff and the council have given this issue.
You wanna waive the second and third, 42A, pursuant to Rule 42A?
Yes, thank you. 61A, B, and waive the second and third reading according to Rule 42A.
42A.
42A, and I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Josh, did you, I did wanna...
Well, I, I was just, I know there are gonna be some constituents who are particularly interested in this, and I don't know if we, we might wanna just wait on the second and third, just to make sure that we don't get any other feedback, or if we're confident that, uh, we're not gonna get further feedback, I'm, I'm okay going ahead, but that, that's all that was on my mind.
Yeah, I, I think we're, I think we're okay, and we'll evaluate and come back if we need to.
Yes, if we need to change it, we'll change it.
We have to, I don't...
I think they've made a lot of changes, and Walk worked with a lot of people that had questions.
Yes, I thought it looked good, and we...
I agree.
But that's what the second or third reading can sometimes help.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. So with that, I just wanted to give a little update, because we have no speakers. I just wanted to let the council know that our next meeting on July 14th, we will be bringing back the housing strategy. There was some discussion of having it at this meeting, to receive and file and refer to the city manager. And staff will be bringing forward their recommendations on what they see is the best for Des Moines. And as we all know, this study was done to give us the reality of what was going on in Des Moines currently and into the future with our housing inventory, and how it will impact our city. And I've received many questions from the public about the housing plan and how it will address affordability. In discussions with the city manager's office and development services, I have requested that more clarity be provided in regard to affordability aspects of the plan, in particular the city's future use of Lytec. I'm assured that on the July 14th meeting, additional language surrounding Lytec usage will be available for discussion and approval. This plan, the estimate is that 75% of the recommended $70 million annual comprehensive housing budget would focus on addressing affordability. One of those eye on, which is our homeowner improvement program, has been proposed to triple in size. This will allow for hundreds of our residents, homeowners struggling financially to receive assistance each year in home repairs. The plan calls for implementing new policies for affordability in multifamily apartments, and changes to invest DSM's charter to include more distressed neighborhoods, and also establish in a community land trust, which will provide a method of preserving long-term affordability for our residents. Those are some of the issues regarding the affordability. I just wanna encourage everyone to review the plan. If you have any questions, submit them to our staff to get more information on it. And with that, we will see everybody back on July 14th.
Motion adjourned, Your Honor.
Is there a second? The meeting is adjourned. Thank you for attending.